Well, that must mean it's time to start. It's kind of, everything got a little bit quiet. So, before we get started with our official meeting this evening, I'd like to ask our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jim Rollins, to lead us in invocation. Then we'll have a pledge of allegiance by our student guests this evening, and then we'll officially call our meeting to order. So, Dr. Rollins.
Welcome. Let's pray together. Dear God, we thank you for all the blessings that you provide each of us. We especially thank you for our students and the privilege that you've given each of us to serve them. You've helped us as their parents and as their teachers to recognize the greatness in each of them. You've helped us to understand that if we do our work well, that they will flourish and be successful in school. We do thank you for all the abundance that we've had in this excellent school year that we're just completing, and we pray that you will guide our every effort as we plan for the new school year to come. Our guiding vision has been teach them all, learning for all, learning together, graduation for all. Our prayer is that in the new year, that together we can deepen and extend these experiences so that each of our students and their families can become more and more successful in school. Amen.
Ms. Goodsell, if you'll come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Our pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands-
One nation, under God-
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I will go ahead and call our June meeting to order. And Board, you have had the agenda for a few days for this evening's meetings. Dr. Rollins, any corrections or modifications to our agenda tonight?
Mr. Luttrell, just one. Under item C, one of our guests that we wanted to extend a friend of Springdale Schools plaque to could not be with us this evening, so we'll do that at a later date. So, C1, we'll do that later. Other than that, the agenda would stand as presented.
All right, we have the amended agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion for Mr. Owenby?
Second.
And a second for Ms. McFetrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is none, so the motion carries. All right, next, Board, you've had the minutes of the May 12 meeting as well for a few days, so if there's not any corrections or modifications to those minutes, I will also accept a motion on that.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, a motion from Ms. McFetrich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Williams. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? There is none, so that motion carries. All right, the next part of our meeting is where we do invite the public for any patron comments to come address the Board. If you are a patron of the district and would like to come forward and address this, here's what we ask, is if you'll just give us your name and your address, and try to keep your comments brief this evening. We're not able to take action on items tonight necessarily, but we certainly would take those things under advisement and perhaps address them at a later time. So, do we have any members of the audience that'd like to come forward? Okay, all right. Well, thank you. I'll go ahead and turn the agenda over to Dr. Rollins to introduce some of our special guests.
Well, tonight is such a special meeting for us. I'm so glad each of you could be here. And let me start by asking our representative from Springdale High School, Ryan Goodsell, to come forward. Ryan, if you would. Board, on page 14 of your agenda, there's a summary. And let me just give some highlights for our guests here this evening. This young lady is just one of our greatest students, without question. She, I think, excels in every arena. I do have that right, don't I? I'm pretty sure I do. She's a rising senior. Her parents are Robert Goodsell and Meredith Goodsell. She's described by our principal as a leader in our school from the way she just handles herself day in and day out, the way she models what we value and characteristics in our Springdale High School graduates. She's taken two years of Spanish language, chemistry, pre-AP English literature during her sophomore and junior years. She's lettered in a number of sports while at SHS, volleyball, basketball, track and field. We're so proud of you. Glad to have you here this evening. Any comments you want to share with the Board, I know they would welcome.
Go ahead and take that microphone so everybody can hear you.
Just thank you guys for what you do and representing us so well, and thank you. Two-time Heisman winner, 5'9" Archie Griffin said, "It's not the size of the dog in the fight, it's the size of the fight and the dog." We would say it's the fight and the bulldog. My name is Ryan Goodsell. I'm supposed to say something about myself, which I'm not always comfortable with. I was born in Tulsa, Oklahoma. I'm 17-years-old, and I've won the meet of champs three times in DISCIS and two times in STATE. I am a Springdale Bulldog. Some things you may not know about me is I am a student first and an athlete second. I am a three-sport athlete at Springdale High School, basketball, volleyball, and track. I consider myself a basketball player first and foremost. I am also proud of our Springdale Girls Basketball Program. My most memorable experiences are my first day at Springdale High School, a little nervous and afraid, going by the gym and seeing my name was already, or was one of already, was on the state board, or the state banner. The first state meet I attended, I was in 9th grade, and I attended George Junior High. I sent both my parents, Meredith and Scott Goodsell, a picture of my name on the board and knew everything was going to be all right. I have so many people, faculty and staff associated with Springdale High School, I would like to thank. Two first and foremost, my track coach, Ronnie Wade, who has always believed in me and encouraged me to lead by example. Coach Hunzucker, she is a strong and very influential part of my life and has taught me so many things from being a great basketball player, leader, and young woman in society. Both these people have played an important role in my life. They have been through personal tough times and were there for me. I do not consider Springdale just a school, but part of my extended family. For my future, both track and basketball will afford me opportunity to attend college and help me start my life career. I will always take with me favorable experiences and memorable times at Springdale. I am thankful to have participated here in school and athletics. We have not always been the biggest dogs, but your Springdale Bulldogs have always had the biggest fight. Thank you.
All right, we're not going to let you run off that easy. You're going to have to come back up here. Nope, you gotta come on back up here. No, you did a great job. Thank you for sharing that with us. Anytime somebody starts with an Archie Griffin quote, that's pretty good. Okay, so you're a rising senior at Springdale High School, correct? Okay, so what are your thoughts after your senior year at Springdale High School?
It's in college, and I'm not really sure on what I want to study in yet, but stay in college and play basketball wherever and get a good scholarship. Thank you.
What other questions maybe do you have for Ryan?
I would just say I've watched you play volleyball and basketball for years, and great competitor, great attitude, and great leader, so you're going to do whatever you want to in life, so good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
What are your plans this summer?
Oh, this summer? I'm going to attend a lot of basketball showcases and attend, on the 20th of June, I've got a Tulsa Elite Camp that they invited me to, and then on the 23rd, I've got Arkansas's Elite Camp that they also invited me to. So, my summer is basically basketball. That's what I'm planning on doing. Thank you.
What about introducing your family that's here?
Oh, okay. This is my lovely mother, Meredith Goodsell, Tucker Yandel, my boyfriend. My sister, Becca O'Neill, and my other sister, Sarah O'Neill, which she was not able to come. My stepmother, Betty O'Neill, my Aunt Missy, and my dad. Thank you.
Great job. Thanks for sharing that with us. Congratulations to you and your family. We wish you the best in your senior year and your summer, full of basketball.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much for having me. It was truly an honor to be here. Thank you.
Dr. Rollins, if you'll come forward and make a very special recognition.
I am very honored to announce to you once again, because you already know this, that Melissa Fink is the Arkansas Elementary Principal of the Year. So, Ms. Fink, would you join me? If I had to sum up what Ms. Fink is all about, it, everything begins and ends with the kids, everything. She knows all the kids in her building, she knows their families, and I don't just mean whether the kid is making academic progress, because that's just a given when it comes to Melissa. She knows their families. She's visited the families. She takes care of the kids, she takes care of all that, and in addition, then she's also a Phase III Master Principal graduate. She is, and she's going for her designation soon. Yes, she's going for her designation soon. She also has been asked by people from the state of Arkansas to talk to them about what school like, how do we educate the children, what is it that you're doing? Because in her tenure at Jones, she has incredibly raised the academic achievement of the kids there. And at that one, the United States Department of Education has called her and said, "Tell us how you're doing this." They come to visit her school. People from all over come to find out what it is that is going on at Jones Elementary, and the leader of all of that, and she will very humbly tell you, it's her staff, and she has an outstanding staff. But to have an outstanding staff takes an incredible leader. So, Ms. Fink, would you like to respond to the Board?
Well, thank you for having me this evening. It was definitely a very humbling experience. I felt very honored to be recognized, but again, I would be remiss if I didn't give credit to where credit was due. I mean, as you know, this district is an awesome place to work, and people come to this district and they grow professionally and they thrive professionally. And I do have a building full of people that, you know, truly care about kids, they have kids at the heart of what they do, and honestly, would not be able to do what I do if I didn't have such great support at our district level with Dr. Rollins and with you and our central office, my colleagues. You know, we do work very closely together. You know, we're always picking up a phone, calling each other. If I want to know what somebody else is doing, you know, we really do learn from each other. And the teachers, you know, at Jones and in this district, they're incredible, and it was just a great experience for me. Thank you.
Well, let's properly recognize Arkansas's Principal of the Year. We are all certainly very, very proud of you and happy for it. It was such a, it was a great day and a great event to see, and your kids, oh, they just, I mean, you said it starts with kids, you could tell just the love that they have for their principal, and Melissa, you're just fantastic, and we're very fortunate that you're here, so.
Thank you. I have to go take care of my kids now.
Got to go take care of other kids. There, she's taking care of kids again. There we go. All right. Bye.
Mr. Jinx, are you in the audience? There he is, right, right in front of me. Let me invite you to come forward, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Board, I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize four of our individuals who have been instrumental as far as the leadership they have shown with a very key part of our district, robotics competition. I had the pleasure, and I taught to be part of some of the first robotics teams at Springdale High School, and it really caught on. And then, when I made the decision to go into administration, I was very fortunate that I could pass that along to some individuals who took up the mantle and carried it forward to the point where it's pretty much embedded in all of our areas and all of our schools. And numerous kids are coming in throughout the district and are getting a chance to use their creative skills, their experiences with science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, to go to competitions for robotics, whether it be for VEX or for FIRST or for FLL or any of those different types of programs. So, I asked Dr. Rollins if it would be possible, and he was gracious enough to allow us to give a moment here for us to recognize these individuals. Scott Turley, who has been with us for a very long time, was called out. He's with the University of Arkansas Physical Plant, and he was called out, and I think, Dr. Rollins, you talked about trying to catch up with him later on some other time. But if these individuals would show up, Dr. Rainwater, Mr. Todd Taylor, Mr. Scott Winfrey. Dr. Rainwater is an instructor and associate professor at the University of Arkansas Engineering Department. Mr. Todd Taylor is part of our math department and also Engineering Academy at Springdale High School. And then, Mr. Scott Winfrey is also in our Engineering Academy and math teacher at Springdale High School. To say that they put in some time on this is to be understatement. They probably put in more than 50 hours a week, over and above what they normally do to be able to get this thing to go forward. And they have passed this on to, because their families want to remember what they look like before they retire, and so they passed this along for a new generation of teachers and community members to work with. And so, Dr. Rollins, at this time, we're going to recognize them with a friend of Springdale plaque to them.
We have a plaque for each of these friends, and the reading is such. "The Springdale School District, with deep appreciation for its service, of five years of exceptional volunteering to the Springdale High School Gear Hogs Robotics Team, that's helped elevate that team to an outstanding success and helped students from Springdale experience science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Style learning, we hereby recognize Scott Winfrey as a true partner and friend of the Springdale Schools." And we have a plaque such as this for each of these gentlemen. Probably words don't do justice, Mr. President, to what these guys have done. If you look at a five-year period and taking a program really from its beginning to where our kids are competing well at the national level, and just try to understand the support and the personal gift of service that they've given to all these young people, the guys is just a piece of memorabilia, but with it goes the thanks to all of our kids for the success that you brought them. Scott, thank you so very much. Thank you. Good to see you. Carol, do we have Carol in the audience, please? Do you think that Scott could come up and get Scott's clap?
Oh, I'm sure he would.
Carol, thank you. Please tell Scott how much we appreciate it. Carol, join in.
Don't be bashful.
Thank you very much for the honor. I'm honestly not sure what to say. We've, you can tell we spend way too much time together. We thoroughly enjoyed it. We, like was said, we've decided to pass it on to a younger generation and someone to take up the mantle for us, and we thank you for all your support that you've given to us, and we look forward to see the initiatives that are going to be placed forth from here on out and what this is going to look like. So, we thank you all very much.
I think, before you all run off, I mean, it really has been good, over the years, to watch what some of the students have done as we've gone to junior highs or different high schools, or as we've had them driving up here in front of us with their robotics equipment. I mean, just where it started with nothing, and whether, in Springdale, whether it's athletics, or band, or choir, or drama, or debate, or robotics, or FFA, I mean, we couldn't do it without volunteers that are truly vested and giving all they can, and, I mean, heck, Chase was even my son's first basketball coach, so he can do it all. But anyway, we do appreciate you very much, so please know that. Thanks.
Dr. Brown?
Mr. Luttrell, Board members, Dr. Rollins, good evening. I have several recognitions this evening. The first one is Teacher of the Year. Springdale is fortunate to have some of the best educators in the profession. The Teacher of the Year celebration is an opportunity to recognize individuals in each building who've gone over and beyond the call of duty, standing out among their peers as deserving acknowledgement of a job well done. This year, 12 secondary schools were nominated by their schools, or secondary teachers were nominated by their schools based on their professional memberships, leadership in staff development, leadership in community, awards and recognitions, philosophy of teaching. And at this time, Dr. Rollins will present each candidate with a certificate of appreciation for being such valuable members of the Springdale team. When I call your name, please come to the front to be recognized, and we ask all candidates to remain at the front until all candidates are called. And, audience, we ask that you will hold your applause until all candidates are at the front and recognized. I'm going to call the names in alphabetical order by middle, junior, and high school, starting with the middle schools. In alphabetical order, Kelsey Ursery from Sonora Middle School, Mary Herndon, Helen Tyson Middle School, Trina Purgison, Helston Middle School, Sarah Deverges, J.O. Kelly Middle School, Wendy Kelly, School of Innovation. I'm now announcing the Junior High Teachers of the Year. Cheryl Pfeifer, Lakeside Junior High School. Richard Newberry, Southwest Junior High School. Cheryl Tupper, George Junior High School. Darren Vaughn, Central Junior High School. And from our three high schools, Alexandra Fitzgerald, Harbor High School. Marjorie Hicknight, Springdale High School. Alonzo Turle, Archer Learning Center. Let's give all of these individuals a round of applause. All of these individuals could represent Springdale in a phenomenal way, and each of them will serve as Teachers of the Year in their respective buildings. However, only one candidate can be chosen to serve as the district's Teacher of the Year. The district Teacher of the Year will represent the district as a candidate in the Arkansas Teacher of the Year competition. We are very excited to announce that the 2015 Springdale Teacher of the Year is Mary Herndon from Helen Tyson Middle School.
Speech, speech, right, Mr. President?
First of all, I'd like to say that I'm in such great company. I think we are a district of superstars. I really do. This is, I'm so humbled and a little beside myself, to be honest. I think, for me, it's always the kids. I'll just come back to that. I love what I do, and so this award is the cherry on top. It really is. So, thank you. I'm honored to represent Springdale, and this is amazing. Thank you so much.
Well, that was a, definitely a wonderful group of candidates, Dr. Brown, and we are fortunate to have so many wonderful teachers, so thank each of you that were standing before us. It was, you make us all look good. Thanks for teaching our children.
That was a tough decision, all wonderful candidates. Congratulations, you guys. The National Geographic Bee. Each year, thousands of schools in the United States participate in the National Geographic Bee using materials prepared by the National Geographic Society. The contest is designed to inspire students to be curious about the world. Schools with students in grades four through eight are eligible for this entertaining and challenging competition. Fifty-one state champs, as well as champions from the United States Territories and Department of Defense schools competed in the national championship. At this time, I'd like to introduce Shannon Tisher, Principal of Southwest Junior High, who will recognize a very special student from Southwest who has recently represented the district in a very special way.
Good evening. I'm so excited to be here in order to recognize this very special young man. So, this young man competed at the school level at Southwest Junior High in the Geography Bee, and advanced eventually to the State Bee, and was elected, or won, I guess I should say, the Arkansas State Bee, and was able to travel to Washington, DC to compete against 53 other representatives in the National Geographic Bee. So, in the first day, these students go through some very heavy competition, and they are actually whittled down to the top 10. And so, all during the first day, we were waiting for updates to see how he had done, and we found out that he had made it to the top 10. And so, those students in the top 10 get to be on the actual TV show, on the National Geographic Channel, where they compete and battle it out for first place. And so- And so, this young man, we were notified later that day, had placed third in the nation. And so, just if you'll come up here with me really quick, I'd like to recognize it this time, Sojas Wagle, third-place winner of the National Geographic Bee. And I'm going to let Sojas tell you about his journey, but I do want to tell you that the news spread very quickly of his placing third because our phone at Southwest started ringing off the hook. The first person to call was Congressman Womack, and he said, "Ms. Tischer, I need you to find Sojas because I want him to come immediately to the Capitol. I want to, I want to, you know, have dinner with him and give him a personal tour of the Capitol and all these things." So, I said, "Oh, of course, you know, we'll get right on the phone." So, I called his mom, and where were you, Sojas?
Joe Biden's house.
Tell him.
Joe Biden's house?
Yeah. Yep. He said, "I'm sorry, Congressman, I cannot come because I'm having ice cream with Vice President Joe Biden." And so, I'm going to let him talk because this is about him, but I cannot tell you that Springdale School District has again shown the amazing capability of our students and the opportunities that are presented to them and how they represent us so well, and I could not be more proud of Sojas. So, I'm just going to let you talk and show them all your stuff.
Hi, thank you for having me. The, it was a really prestigious opportunity to get to the Nationals, and I think that was like my first goal to get there because I've not really ever been there, and I was like really surprised by how large-scale, large-scale it was. And, and then the first day, they kind of just like, let you kind of relax and have fun, and then they have like all these things to do, like cruises and bowling. But then the second day, it kind of gets down to like the competition. The prelims probably were the most stressful part of the day. They gave you like 10 questions, and then, they were all oral, you had to answer them and, in like 12 seconds each, and whoever had like the most, the top 10 that had the most got to move on. And I, luckily I didn't get to, luckily I only, didn't make it, didn't have to do the tiebreakers, and I automatically went to the top 10. And after the whole top 10 was arranged, there was all the press and cameras, and it was really overwhelming. But then I, I guess af, I then, I guess after that, it kind of just really came down to the whole competition, and it was like, I think it was aired on National Geographic and PBS, and like all my family and friends were watching it at home. And so, on the, I think the first thing that really surprised me was usually every year they ask World Geography, but then the, they did something different this year, and then they had U.S. Geography in the first, in the first half of the competition. I think that took me by the surprise, but I decided like, stay calm, and I answered them correctly, and I, that, that way I made it to the World Geography, which I felt more comfortable in. And the two places I think that really tripped me up were the, the two new additions they added were the GeoChallenge activities. And then the first activity, they, they took us to something called like, like an undisclosed location, and then it turned out to be the, the U.S. Botanical Gardens. And what they did was they set up stations all over the garden, and we had to like, it was a timed thing, and we had to go through each station and answer the questions. So, they would, they would like show you a plant, and then they would explain about, and explain things about it, and then they would ask you a question, you had to answer in 12 seconds, and you have to do that for three times throughout the garden. It was like a timed thing. So, I ended, I ended up missing one question. I think the, that one question kind of made me a little behind in the actual competition, but I think I caught up to get into the top three. And then in the top three, they had another GeoChallenge activity, which was very different from, instead of just answering in one word, you had to really make a speech about it. And I, and it was kind of, it just caught me off guard, but I was, I was really happy that I made it to the top three since it was like my first time at the Nationals. And for the first things, what I got from Congressman Womack, which, who represent, honored me at the, at my school, it was like by surprise. So, the first thing, he gave me this medal. And then also, he gave me a letter too, congratulating me, and of course, the medal that they gave for third place. And then I think that, then the, also I had some letters from people I was not expecting, like the Lieutenant Governor and Attorney General of Arkansas. But I think the, the one letter that really stood out was, I got a letter from a lawyer in Columbus, Ohio, and he said that he won the Arkansas State Geographic Bee in 1991 and 1992, and he said he's been keeping up with the Bee, and I thought that was really special of him to like, write me, write me a note and congratulating me. Also, I got a $10,000 scholarship.
You remembered the ice cream, but you forgot.
Do you want to introduce your mom?
Oh, yeah. This is my mom, Aparna Wagle.
Well, it was certainly exciting. I know for me, just reading the newspaper, trying to keep up with you a little bit, and then we've got some information in our packet of the questions that you answered in the Geography Bee, and I don't want to go up against you. I can tell you that it is an amazingly impressive list, so. Board, other comments or questions?
I've got a quick comment. I, anybody that knows me knows that the Geography Bee is probably not something I'm going to search out on TV and watch normally. And I just happened to be that day that you were on TV. I was, I clicked around trying to find a good sports event, and I came across the Bee, and I, I remembered that you were going to be on there, and it was right at the beginning, and I heard the first question, and I was hooked. I was like, I've never even heard of that. I mean, the, the words that they were using, the countries and the rivers and, I mean, I don't know how you do it, son. I mean, that's, that's just, it's unbelievable. I mean, I sat there and listened to all 10 of them. I watched the whole thing, and I even had one of my sons sitting there, which was even more amazing. And it was amazing. You guys were awesome, and the fact that you came in third place, that's wonderful. You get to, to compete again, don't you? You can, can go back and do it again, or?
Um, it only goes up to eighth grade, and also, the top three, they don't, I guess the top three is also, that's their last year.
Well, you did a great job. You really did. Yeah, I just, I mean, I, I don't, it was amazing, just the, the words. I don't even know how, how to pronounce half the stuff that's in our packet. So, just the fact that you can memorize all that and know about it, keep it up, you're going to go, you're going to go a long ways in life.
Thank you.
Well, he's also known for his spelling abilities, too. So, is that something you can compete in next year?
Oh, that also starts in eighth grade.
Oh, is it really?
Yeah.
You're just going to have to find a new challenge.
Yeah.
So, I'm just curious, this summer, what do you do after the end of spring? You've already done this, anything, any big plans for your summer?
Uh, not really. We just, some, we just go on some vacations, and I just try to get some, try to go to some summer camps, but that's pretty much it. It's kind of like a relaxation.
Well, congratulations. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Sojas. I know your mom and dad are so proud of you. The next recognition this evening is the American Choral Directors Association National Honors Choir. Founded in 1959, the American Choral Directors Association is a nonprofit music education organization whose express purposes outline the association's dedication to the advancement of choral music. Each year, many students apply to audition for a spot in the National Honors Choir. These students audition by submitting recordings on pre-selected pieces of music which are required in order to be judged. Springdale had the most students from any district in the state of Arkansas selected to be part of this National Honors Choir, only convening every two years. Out of 3,000 applicants nationwide, students from Central Junior High School and Southwest Junior High School were selected to be part of this choir. Here to introduce the students are Choir Directors, Mr. Alan Sherwalter and Mr. Ed Gay.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Rollins, School Board members. First of all, I want to say thank you for your support and for honoring this achievement, these hard-working students. Last August, Southwest Choir and Central Choir students were made aware of this performing opportunity at the National ACDA Convention in Salt Lake City. Five students from Southwest Junior High School, along with thousands of students from the 50 states, recorded a short audition and waited to hear if they'd been accepted to the National Honor Choir. Four of our five were accepted. Then the real work began.
Students were sent portfolios of music to practice for several months to prepare for their performances. Students were expected to have all the notes, all the rhythms, and also all the foreign language learned before they arrived in February. The students worked diligently before and after school and made sure that they were ready for, to sing every single note. But before they could perform, the students would rehearse 8 to 10 hours a day for the three days of the International Compete, or the National Honor Choir. And they performed or had conducting them internationally renowned directors who demanded the highest level of excellence from each student.
Emily and I had Elena Sharкова as our director. Mrs. Sharкова is from St. Petersburg, Russia, and chose several Russian songs for us to learn. We sang two songs in Russian, one in Spanish, one in Latin, one in Hindi, and several songs in English. We started each rehearsal with yoga, and there was a lot of dancing, too. Mrs. Sharкова is very passionate about music, and she moved to America to pursue her musical career.
We were able to meet several of the composers, including Will Todd, who was commissioned to write Gloria specifically for our choir in this convention. We were able to meet lots of fellow singers from around the country and were treated like professionals, re-performed in a Bravenell Hall, the Tabernacle, and the LDS Conference Center, which holds 21,000 people.
William and I had Bob Chilcott as our director. Dr. Chilcott is a British singer, composer, and conductor who, who you may have heard of in The King Singers. Right from the beginning, Dr. Chilcott treated us like adult singers. He expected the best posture and behavior from us at all times. He said, "To be treated like a professional, you must act like a professional."
Our choir was made up of sixth through ninth-grade boys, but were able to sing music originally written for mixed choirs, including soprano, alto, tenor, and bass parts. The current King Singers performed for us, and we performed alongside the Mormon Tabernacle Choir and the, and the United States Air Force singing sergeants. I would say it was definitely a life-changing and inspirational experience for us all.
My name is Joseph, and I was the one from Central. It was a great time, and Bob Chilcott was one of the most amazing directors you could have as a choir student, just because of his love of music and his passion towards it. It just helped you grow in that week with him. I mean, we became a great choir group.
I know we, we have your, your names in the list here. Would you come back forward and just introduce yourselves again, just so we've got everybody's names, and then have your parents stand up as you, as your student talks about themselves, too. All right, so come back.
My name is Joseph Buckholz, and I was from Central Junior High.
My name is William Gay, and I'm from Southwest Junior High.
I am Josue Abalar from Southwest Junior High.
I'm Emily Womack from Southwest Junior High.
And I'm Megan Cross from Southwest Junior High.
Congratulations to these students and their families. Way to go. I, I am sure you're probably the only ones in the room that may have ever performed at the Mormon Tabernacle Choir in their facility. I mean, just, I bet that was amazing, so, the experience, don't forget it. Keep, keep music going. Good job. Thanks. You bet. Thank you. Did anybody want to sing before you leave for us? Are you okay? No, you're okay, all right. I figured I better give you that opportunity.
Joseph has produced the CD with the blue hat.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. For the last honor, let me call Allison Sizemore, Lauren LaMaestra, and Bethany Maddox to the podium. Northwest Arkansas Community College recognized 132 high school students from area high schools for having excelled in college classes that were taken at NWHAC through the Early College Experience Program or through Northwest Technical Institute Secondary Career Center. The students recognized received the title of Rising Scholars. In order to receive the award, graduating seniors must be enrolled or have completed 12 college credit hours while maintaining a 3.0 or higher NWHAC GPA. The district had a total of three students, and we'd like to recognize these students tonight. So, I'd like you to tell the board who you are and, and talk a little bit about your experience with NWHAC.
All right. I'm Bethany Maddox. I am a senior from Springdale High School. I really wanted to go to NWHAC this semester and kind of head-start my college experience. I kind of just wanted to get ahead and jump-start that decision. So, I went to NWHAC this semester, and I took, I think, four classes over all this total year, and I maintained a 4.0 there, so I'm really excited about that, going into college with that on my record. So, it was a really fun experience, and I'm very grateful that Mr. Jinkson, Springdale High School, allowed me to do that and experience that and just kind of get ready for what's coming.
So, what is coming next for you?
Um, for me, I'm going to John Brown University, and I will be playing volleyball there, as well as doing the honors program and stuff like that there, so.
Have you picked out a major yet?
Um, I'm kind of thinking I'm going to be a communications major and international relations as well, so.
Did you actually drive to the NWHAC every day for these classes?
Yes, I went to Springdale until, I think, after second period I left, and then I headed up to NWHAC. I was at the Springdale campus two days a week, and then I drove up to Bentonville three days a week, so, yeah. Um, the first semester I took Biology and Psychology, and then second semester I took Physical Science and College Algebra, so.
I think you'll do well with your communications degree.
Thank you.
Do you have family with you?
Yes, my mom's with Bethany Maddox. She's right there.
Did you say you maintain a 4.0?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Very impressive.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, would you like to come forward? You have another group of very special young people to recognize, I know.
Good evening, School Board, Dr. Rollins. We would like to say thank you so much for the leadership and vision and wisdom that you provide. The Media Department in 2014, 2015 had a banner year. The Springdale Public Schools YouTube channel went over 400,000 total views this year. Springdale High School, Harbor High School, and the district television programs covered over 100 events, most of them live, from choir, band, graduation, football, basketball, professional development, and of course, school board meetings. The Media Department initiatives expanded into 18 total schools this year, producing videos that are going up on the Springdale Public Schools YouTube channel. We partnered with over 20 community partners, including the Jones Center, the Northwest Arkansas Council, RVest Bank, the Department of Career Education, and many more. Arkansas Council, RVest Bank, the Department of Career Education, and many more. The distinguished television programs in Springdale, their classes won over 125 total awards in the state, region, and nation. Most notably, and I'm very proud to say this, Teacher of the Year for Skills USA, Rochelle Moore. Teacher of the Year for Arkansas Scholastic Press Association, Travis Sherman. And none of this would be possible without the vision and leadership, and that was proven by winning Administrator of the Year, Dr. Jim Rollins. So at this time, what I'd like to do is turn the mic over to Ms. Rochelle Moore from Springdale High School and let her talk about some of the highlights from her program.
Good evening. He wanted, he told us to pick a little bit of highlights, and if you know me, that's really hard to do because I seem to find highlights in everything. But some ones that are really particular to us was we took our skills state officers, we have two, and we went to Washington Leadership Training Institute, and they went to the Hill, and they talked to them about the importance of Perkins money and Perkins funding, and that is a big deal for all CTE classes. We also got to do a lot of community service projects this year. So we're trying not to only focus on video and film production, but focusing on how to make them well-rounded individuals to go into society. And we worked with the Northwest Arkansas Children's Shelter on that. Another highlight that we had, well, somewhere, well, it's more of a personal one for me. A lot of us know about the Peace Walk that happened. It was really interesting to watch it from a teacher's perspective because Officer Camacho is an SHS student. He's a Bulldog TV student. And as we were walking through the walk, you looked up, and there was Mauro Perez working for Univision. She was a Bulldog TV student. And those are really big highlights for us as a program, to see our kids going into society and creating an impact, and a positive one. And that's about, that's it. I got it.
Joseph's microphone is a little bit duller. I want to thank you guys, first of all, for your support, Dr. Jim Rollins, I mean, Dr. Brackett. Dr. Osterly's back here, but he's moving schools. Congratulations to him, but we're going to miss him. But without your continued support, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. We had a great year. Some of the highlights would include Best Comedy in the Nation at the All-American High School Film Festival. We did number one in the nation at the Chicago Stamp Out Smoking, as well as the Arkansas Stamp Out Smoking. We did first place in the state for KNWA's Anti-Bullying Competition. One of my ones that kind of shocked me was a student this year actually placed first for Best Cinematography in the Toronto International Student Film Festival, and that's an international competition. We also took home third place in the nation for Student Television Network. We won three Student Pillars of Excellence from the Emmys. We're going to Arkansas Skills USA. We did first place, and we're going to take a trip to Kentucky in the summer, in a couple weeks. Couple weeks, we're going to go to Louisville and compete nationally, so best luck to those guys. As well as runner-up for Broadcast Producer of the Year and runner-up for Broadcast Video Editor of the Year, we had a fantastic year, and I can't wait to see what happens in the future.
And as you know, we also have a television program on the district level. Some of those highlights, we had a young man named Michael Driscoll, who won Editor of the Year at Arkansas Scholastic Press Association, and he also won Editor of the Year through the Little Rock Film Festival AETN Student Selects. We won All Arkansas for the third year in a row. Our programs, combined with Ms. Moore's and mine, we won gold at Skills USA for the third year in a row, and we had two selections in the Little Rock Film Festival AETN Student Selects. And I hope that, this is what we always say, we have award walls in our classes when you come in. What we always tell the students is, these are opportunities. Yes, we'll give you the skills that you could take this into a career or into post-secondary, but when you really think about what we're doing, we're telling stories. We are a service program. You look at building the whole child, and I think that you have two representatives of educators here in front of you that are some of the best in the state, if not the region and the nation, at doing just that, at not only providing top-notch skills, but also teaching the whole child. So in closing, I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to tell your stories and to be a part of all the buildings and the great work that you guys do. So thank you so much.
Good afternoon. I'm not as tall as he is. Isn't this so beautiful? So pretty. So nice. Well, we are going to talk with you about our proposal for a district conversion charter school. And there's going to be a PowerPoint that's coming down behind you, and we've got Mr. Hatch, who's working on hooking us up. I want to introduce, reintroduce to you, if you got it, Mr. Joe Rollins, who is Principal of School of Innovation, and Dr. Mark Osterly, who is joining us at School of Innovation as Assistant Principal next year. And unfortunately for him, he is, he is in the thick of this process as far as the district conversion charter application. I also want to recognize in the back, Mr. Jason House, who has been an integral part of what we've been working on with School of Innovation. So thank you, Mr. House, certainly for your, for your help. So we're going to be reviewing the PowerPoint with you, and if you guys, I know you, you need to see, but you also, perfect, so you're, you're good where you are. So we're going to start with giving you an idea of the vision statement, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Rollins.
A year ago, we stood in this room, and we talked about what if. We asked the question, what would school look like if we could go back and reinvent? A year later, we're coming back now to try and touch this up even further. So our vision statement for the school, just to recap on the year, we wanted to maintain the STEM focus. We wanted to be high technology. We wanted to allow flexible learning, digital learning for students so that they could self-pace, they could move through the content at their pace, but still create that deep learning opportunity for kids. Current numbers right now, we've maintained our students were at about 191 current eighth graders. We're going to be 200-plus coming in for our incoming eighth grade class. And Mr. House informed me as he came in this afternoon, over a third of those students in entirety are taking advantage of optional summer learning opportunities just to continue to advance and to accelerate. Those are big numbers. Those are students who are willing to give up summer time to work from home digitally because they understand the value of what we're offering. So again, to continue this philosophy, we're asking the question now, what more can we do for our students? How can we reach out? How can we attract more students? How can we help more students through the means that we provide now, through our digital outreach, through our flexible learning, allowing students to accelerate through the content? We think we have an answer for that.
I just had the best idea to grab this mic so we can all join in the fun. So, goals. To improve opportunities for personalized learning, we are wanting to seek a platform for a digital operation for students to be able to access K-12. We want to include platforms that give them access at home and here at school. We want to provide a dual-language opportunity for students K-12 to be able to seek that advantage, and also to enhance opportunities through additional waivers that are not currently afforded in our current application. You can see there that we are currently educating our fellow educators in what this model currently looks like. We are hosting lots of tours. We are getting lots of calls. We are, we are trying to spread the message of what we're doing right now and trying to share those things that have not worked as well for us and those things that have worked, been very successful for us. We want to increase that bar for student access and meet the students where they are, whether that's either in our district, or in our state, or in our nation. We want to move to that project-based experience, and the question always is asked of us, if we don't do this, then who will? We have heard our community, our community has asked for more experiences for our students, and this is our effort to respond to that need. Standards, of course, versus competency. So where are we now? You're all familiar. We've grown at a large pace. We know what our remediation rates look like at the university level. We know that college is expensive and that kids need some direction prior to entering college. We know that there is an increase in the charter district conversion competition area. We know that those funds are highly sought after. And we also know that we cannot afford to simply do status quo, that we have to offer our, our kids more. And so what that looks like through waivers is through dual-language offerings. We want to look at certification. We want our industry expert specialists to be able to come in and work with our students, and for our students to be able to work with them, regardless if they have the ability to have a teaching certificate. Digital, online, 100% offerings and access. We want our students to be able to access that at home and at school. And we want to be able to be a school of choice. We want kids to be able to have the option to have the outreach to access.
Thank you. And as we start moving forward, you know, one of the things that we definitely want to do is, we want to be leading the way. All of us had an opportunity today to attend an Eye on Innovation conference. Commissioner Key was there and kicked us off, and Springdale was well-represented. But the conference last year, we've doubled in size, and the interest is continuing to grow in that area, and we want Springdale to continue to be able to lead the way in this area. Some of the expectations that we would have of our students, we want students leaving us with either that associate's degree and an industry standard certification in their applied career field. We want them ready to enter out either into a career field or into the workplace, that there is no question as we go. The idea of competency-based performance, ending with a senior thesis and capstone project with an internship their senior year in their desired area of field. One of the things we want to do to promote that interest base and that project base is really get East as part of their curriculum early on, so that there's a required classes East as part of that curriculum early, and then again in their 10th through 12th grade year. The other piece that we want to work in here is making sure that the content that we are delivering is as real-world as we can make that with those cross-curricular projects, where we're integrating English, Science, Social Studies, Math into a project that the students select, students-directed, where they have some voice and choice in that, and being able to demonstrate mastery versus an A, B, C, D, multiple-choice test. One of the things that's, again, one of those draws is that international study between junior and senior year. Now, that can look a lot of different ways, but we want to have kids that opportunity to be able to compete globally and have some of those global experiences while they're with us. The idea of the dual-language offerings coming up as part of those waivers, that's something that would start as early as kindergarten and grow all the way through. We know that those are the most effective programs, but we want to be able to offer those as our businesses have asked for languages. That's one of the things that we want to be able to do. Looking at PSA Tate a little bit earlier for our students, as we have students that are entering into those community college classes, that's going to be one of those entrance requirements or entrance exams that they can use as we get going into the community college. Give us that opportunity to look at that a little bit earlier. Of course, SLCs around those career interests, the senior internships out in their applied career fields. The other thing that kind of changes up is that this is really continuous access, open 24/7, continued coursework throughout the summer. The calendar for students here and through the online program will look different than a traditional calendar, so we want to be able to look at some of those opportunities for our students. The other piece that came back, and we heard from our patron shelf meeting, and one of the folks that was there, is we don't want students that are so focused with their nose in a computer all day long that they're not getting involved, and so we want to make sure that every student is involved in something. So one of those expectations is that students are involved in at least one extracurricular program, be that athletics, sports, fine arts, a club that's on campus that's offered, because we want to make sure that they're having that, that same experience, that same high school experience, and then some of those just general communication collaborative project-based skills that we would want them to have.
I want to make sure that we all understand the message. This is not about taking anything away from what we currently offer. The same face-to-face instruction, the same students coming to our school every day still entirely on the table. Nothing comes off the table. We're simply trying to ask the question, what more can we offer? It's about adding additional services to what we offer now. What if we could offer answers to students who couldn't attend school for any number of reasons? What if we could answer the issues of, well, this course is overcrowded, maybe I could take it this way and provide an opportunity for students who might not have had it otherwise? What if we could offer students the chance to continue accelerating regardless of who they are, where they live, what issues they may be dealing with? That's what we're trying to get to now. So we've, we can talk about any number of groups of students that have called, have asked, have talked about, what are my options? What are my possibilities for coming to the School of Innovation? What are my options about taking only certain classes? Because right now, my day is full. I have, I have certain needs. I have travel issues. I'm away. This is how we try to answer that question. And it's not trying to use a curriculum that's anywhere else. It's our teachers providing our quality of curriculum that students can have 24/7 access to. We're trying to pursue the domain name, infiniteonline.com. That will be the provider for our lessons. That's how students can reach out to us. We've talked about it, anytime, anywhere. That's how they'll be able to reach us, customized to our, our standards, our expectations for education. Students who might be able to look at this, what if this could be an opportunity to do something other than a disciplinary action? Students who may have had to go home, couldn't have been a part of our school campus, lost the time. That time can now be regained for them as well. This is simply, online, infiniteonline.com is simply our host site. All content is still Springdale-created, Springdale-owned, produced by Springdale teachers.
So for us to achieve the goal of, of this district conversion charter approval, I want to take you through the steps, the processes that you have to go through. It goes without saying that part of this process allows us to access grant funds, and so that will be part of the conversation. And so there's a pretty strict protocol that's followed to be able to receive those funds and, and in addition, receive the designation for your school. So our first, first step is coming before you to seek approval to, to move forward with this. We desire to have a public meeting to be held on June 30th at 6:00 PM at the Jones Center. That is an informational meeting that is required part of, as part of the grant. That is to answer any questions that anyone may have and to provide just a brief overview of where we are at this point in the application process. The next step will be an application to the charter school office. If the charter school office approves that at the state level, we would be granted a hearing before the charter authorizing panel. We would be provided a specified amount of time to present our case to the panel. The panel will then make a decision, and one of those decisions could be for us to go back and start the process in and make modifications, which would mean that we would need to wait another school year to be able to implement the program. So we won't know that until we get to that point. However, the other option would be that they, they process us forward, and they grant us a hearing before the Arkansas State Board of Education. And at that point, the Arkansas State Board of Education can do the same thing. They can ask for revision and have us go back through the process again, setting us back that year, or they, or they can give us permission at that point, which would allow us to open officially underneath that School of Innovation school with an LEA assigned to a district conversion, which would be in '16, '17. And so, of course, with this, it's going to require growth plans. We're going to need to assess our staffing needs. When we're looking at a digital access, what does that look like? And those systems to allow that growth to happen over time, we, we have to look at the flexibility within those. So I don't know if you guys have any questions for us?
So what, can you say 100% online? Is that truly 100% online? Like, no, no physical contact with the school?
The online portion would be in addition to the face-to-face interaction that we have with students. We will still maintain our face-to-face offerings for our kids. The online offerings will simply be for students who may not be able to make it to our campus.
So that falls into the category of that population you say that we are not serving?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea what that population estimate is? I mean, I don't know how you know that, but...
Well, I think overall, I think that would be difficult, that would be difficult to isolate. In terms of, of what we're estimating, our estimate is about 1,200 students in our, in our area. We won't fully know that, of course, until we open up the application process, but before we can do that, we've got to have permissions and go through this step process. But it's really two things. You can have traditional face-to-face instruction that we offer now. You could also then access it online if you are that face-to-face student, but if you're a student who falls into another population for whatever reason, and, and our typical school day does not work for you, and I could give you 100 examples, and principals could too, it could be that you could access our school only online.
Accessibility where you could have 25% this week online and 75...
Correct.
Actually, maybe 75 online and 25...
Yes, sir. Flexibility. Yes, sir.
If we just look within the region, and maybe more specifically, just the districts around us, this would be a great opportunity to work in partnership with families, moms and dads, kids who are in the homeschool experience, but that may well represent the 1,200 kids you spoke to. But then at the state level, currently, there's another 20,000-plus kids who's... But then at the state level, currently, there's another 20,000-plus kids who's, who are involved with the Arkansas Virtual Academy. So there, there, there's a tremendous opportunity to, to serve and to compete through the digital process.
You said earlier, Joe, that a third of your 400 are doing some online this summer?
To give you some specific numbers, as of today, we have 140 of our current and incoming students participating in optional summer activities that are primarily digital.
That's by choice?
By choice, allowing them the opportunity to accelerate from their kitchen table if they choose to.
What would that look like for the summer for those kids?
They see the same content that our face-to-face students see. They see the digital video libraries that our teachers have created, the lessons that they've posted, the assignments that our teachers have posted. It's just simply submitted electronically.
This is them getting ahead for next fall or picking up some stuff that, just whatever they want to do in...
You'll, you'll see a combination of both. Some of our current students are utilizing our extended year due to flexible learning to finish up a couple of things they needed to finish, and then they'll continue to accelerate. We have some incoming eighth graders who jumped at the opportunity to gain potentially a credit to a credit and a half before they ever walk in the door in August.
What's the coordination like for those 140 kids?
We have, we provide orientation. Our parents and our students came in together Monday for our incoming eighth graders to understand our system, how to log in and how to proceed through our coursework. Our students who are trying to finish things up, they came in, they sat down with us. We established a work plan for how to finish up their work for the year and then how to take next steps throughout the remainder of the summer. The only time that digital students need to come to campus is for end-of-course tests. And there will be a couple of checkpoints throughout the process where we just sit down with them, make sure everything's working in their favor.
Making as much or as little as they want to in the summer?
Yes, sir.
What are your staffing needs this summer, then? How are you dealing with that?
We have a couple of things going on this summer. We have a group that's continuing to develop content so that we can stay ahead of our students who are trying to progress throughout the summer. And then we have some face-to-face instruction going on, helping students finish up current assignments. So you'll see two things going on if you were to walk through the School of Innovation anytime this week or next week or the week after.
And the students that are taking... The students that are taking some of the accelerated courses or getting ahead still have access to teachers via email and contact that way. So they're not just completely left on their own to go through. If they have questions, there still is a teacher that's providing that support throughout the process. So I think that's important for, for people to know that they still have that, that content or that con, contact, feedback opportunity from teachers as they're moving through the course.
Does your goal get all 400 doing some stuff over the summer or 600, 800, whatever?
We, we want as many of our students as possible to take care of accelerating. And we have a large number that did that without any kind of hesitation at all. And that's encouraging. That, that speaks volumes to the message that's out there about School of Innovation, what our students are capable of doing.
But this group we're talking about is, is completely separate than the 1,200 kids that would be accessing online for these other reasons you listed?
Yes, sir.
Completely separate populations. No overlap at all?
And you could, and you could see some blend. We could have students that needed to take only a couple of online classes to try and play catch-up for any number of reasons. We, we could be a provider of that sort of mean also.
And the idea behind this is, is complete flexibility. So us not setting a predetermined, this is what it's going to be and this is what time the bell rings. It really is about putting the content out, providing them with a, a mentor and a guide on the side, helping them through the learning process, providing them with content experts as a, as a feedback, and then saying, okay, what is the model that best fits you? For some students, it is purely face-to-face. For some students, it could look like a blended model. For some students, it might be purely online. It just depends on, on the individual need of the students.
Any issues from a classroom teacher's perspective? If the kid's there today and then not there two days and back and doing... We, we work with that currently? We have students who have different travel needs, different medical needs.
They check in with their teachers. They stay current with their homework. The teachers have the ability through the technology, even if they want to provide FaceTime with the students, they're doing some of that also. So face-to-face instruction can happen from here to wherever students need to be. For example, the young man that you met here that was at the geography bee, he, he was doing very well. He's currently attending Southwest, but his math classes were coming via FaceTime with Ms. Houston from the School of Innovation.
So he would be one of the 1,200. His usage would be a very short period for a specific reason and then he's on to face-to-face?
Yes, sir.
If it fits his needs. So for him, he needed the advancement in math, but he might not need the advancement in science or another area. Just depends on the individual child, where they are in that continuum.
Again, not to take anything off, just trying to add any flexibility and assessments to more students?
Thinking about the, thinking about the, the financial side of it, okay, so if you've got a student that's there for one class or, you know, and state partnership funding that goes along with it, how do you, how are we able to receive funding for this type of ambitious and unique initiative, I guess?
So going through this process is, is one, as far as grant funds. Beyond that, how do we ensure that it is a fiscally sound business model? Is we ensure that no differently than we ensure if they are physically with us face-to-face. So we make sure that the child has the support and the tools, which in some cases may be this and in some cases may be toilet tissue. You know, it depends on what the need is for the, for the particular child and where they're located. So we have to look at children for their individual needs, for whatever personalization they require, and then provide the supports that meet whatever those particular needs are. Yeah, so if, you're exactly right, though. Growth plans, reviewing staffing needs, all of those things we'll have to look at in a different way from how we've typically calculated an average teacher's day. Because right now, we say that 1.0 FTE can serve X number of students. Well, if you take the face-to-face interaction away, I'll give you an example, what we're, what we've done this year for help. One teacher could serve 1,400 students if we do it in a different way. So it could be that we don't hire full-contract teachers. Maybe we hire teachers of excellence in a particular area for a particular content, for a particular course. It's, it is moving to that model that we see already happening in higher education, where they are hiring, hiring teachers as a course and letting them facilitate the course.
Teachers are already posting YouTube. There's no, there's nothing new there.
No, sir.
Being a coordination effort?
Correct.
For these kids?
Yes.
Be new?
Correct.
Content, YouTube, and all that's already established?
Correct.
The question I heard Mr. Luttrell ask was, how do they demonstrate mastery? How do they demonstrate through this process that the essential learnings have been accomplished, et cetera, so in fact, they can move on in a credible way?
If you look at what the landscape of entry-level freshman college courses look like and beyond, even current doctoral courses right now, primarily online component that allow for different threaded conversations, different products to be delivered, different conversations to be posted, videos to be posted, this is the next logical connection. Colleges and universities have been doing this for quite some time for distance learning programs. We're offering the same kind of opportunity before students actually get there. So we're trying, once again, to help make that connection. If we're going to be college and career-ready, let's start that step early. If that's what early college coursework looks like, let's offer, let's offer that look early.
For the most prolific university in the state of Arkansas in terms of producing bachelor degree candidates is Arkansas State University at Jonesboro. And virtually all of that is online. So that model is out there. And what, what you're seeing these individuals do is just look at it and really personalize it and bring it home to our school system.
Is that flexibility in terms of assignments and assessments that we offer our face-to-face students, just netted distance?
And the efficiency, you mentioned that the efficiency is longer-term, it's convenient.
You can see the impact in terms of efficiency immediately. Think of those different things that go into coordinating. It, it changes how we can budget. It changes how we will allocate. It will change what the calendar looks like, which is what Mr. Rollins referred to earlier.
Are there long-term building needs possibly?
Correct. It's exciting.
Okay, so in terms of what you need from us tonight is basically a formal motion to approve the conversion charter to proceed forward. Is there...
To allow us to apply.
To allow us to...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. And what other questions for Megan or Dr. Osterle or Joe?
I think we asked this last time, but setting up the separate ID number, for lack of a better term.
Mm-hmm.
I know we had an issue before with the ALE and going back and trying to get that...
Yes.
We're not creating a...
An issue there.
Longer-term...
No, sir. We would, we would need the designation of an LEA to be, to be outlined, to allow us to apply the specific waivers to that LEA. Otherwise, that, I do not foresee that the state board would approve that to be to multiple LEAs, because they're going to want to send funds to a specific LEA to be distributed to a specific LEA.
Other questions? Okay. Well, if not, as I understand it, we do need to make a motion to allow Megan to move forward, to submit the application for the charter conversion, conversion charter. I may be sending that backwards.
District conversion charter.
Conversion charter. So do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Ms. McFetrich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Cook. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is none, so motion carries, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
There I use your day. All right.
So in other exciting news, we have a new partnership on the horizon. I'd like to ask Dr. Paul Greep to come up and join me to talk about some new connections with Bright Futures. And Bright Futures was presented to, to Dr. Rollins initially. And he asked us to do some investigations to find out more information about what Bright Futures could offer Springdale students. And so we started that partnership and the process with Mr. Ralph Nesson. And Bright Futures is a group that is available, who have, who have offerings and connect services that are needed for students. And those services could be on a multitude of platforms. So that could include help. It could include physical, it could include emotional, mental, whatever the services are that are needed. Their job is to help connect us to those services. So we have been offered a grant to become a district member. The district membership is a one-time fee of $2,500. And we've been offered a grant to accept, to allow us to accept that district membership, which will allow us to become a partner with Bright Futures. And we wanted to make sure that we have a good handle on what Bright Futures can offer and also what the communication and the partnership needs to look like on our end as a responsibility and also on the community's end. And so we started with a pilot. And so our desire is to have a motion to approve, to allow us to move forward with this pilot. And we'd like to start this pilot process at Central Junior High. And so I'm going to let Mr. Paul Greep talk with us about what that will look like.
Thank you, Megan. Couple of months ago, when we met with Mr. Nesson, it was real, really, it's, it's a great program. It's, it's in a, Springdale is such a giving community, yet there is a lot of need. And within this program, it's basically using social media in a confidential way to be able to advertise the needs of our kids. For example, just on a small scale, let's say that we are having a prom and I have seven or eight kids that, that do not have shoes. Well, rather than scrambling and whatnot to look for those, you can use the power of social media to say, I have a need for four pairs of shoes, black, size eight. Can anyone help? And then through the coordination, members of our community can step forward and say, yes, I can fill that need. So shoes is one example. It could be other health services and whatnot. So we're excited about this opportunity. It's very innovative to be able to use social networking and social media to get that help for our kids, but we certainly think that it's a worthwhile venture to look at.
Can you talk a little bit about using social media, keeping it secure and private? When you say social media, I get nervous right away.
Absolutely. And, and that was one of our first concerns when we, when we met with Mr. Nesson. First of all, using the Bright Futures organization provides credibility. So that way, people that wish to donate know that it's going through a reputable organization. And then on the flip side of it, you obviously would never advertise any identity pieces of kids and whatnot. Rather, you use coordinators within our building. We're looking at, you know, using our counselor and using our RTI coordinator and myself to help fill, you know, to be that channel of communication. And so if we had families or students or things that became known to us, certainly you always want to keep that confidentiality piece there. But then you just, you know, use the power of social media to be able to advertise the need. We, we do it in many aspects already, just not using social media, where if we have families or kids that come to us saying that I need this, we use our, our grassroots efforts to try to fill the need. So certainly, we want to make sure that we're very protective of identity and, and we believe that the organization will be able to guide us as we move forward with that. So it's a great question.
Other questions? Okay, if not, then you're seeking a motion to proceed with the pilot program with Bright Futures Connection Program at Central Junior High. That's basically what you need from us. Okay.
Mr. Luttrell, the letter on page 48 really acknowledges a phenomenal Springdale family who has agreed to help us underwrite this. David and Lisa Ray are phenomenal supporters of our school. And you, Megan, you may have already acknowledged that, but they are really interested in this program because they see it really providing services to Springdale kids and families.
Okay. With that, somebody like to make that motion?
So moved. As you said a while ago, I'm not going to repeat it.
All right. Mr. Hudson has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Williams. Any other questions? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is none. Well, certainly pass along to, to the Ray family our appreciation for the grant to be able to do this. And having talked to Ralph a year ago when he was kind of getting this started, it really seemed like a neat deal and there's other districts using it. I think it'll be a great tool, so good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So our, our, in my section, the final item is seeking board approval for our migrant education contract. This is a contract between our district that we renew on a yearly basis. It's in partnership with the Boston Mountain Educational Cooperative, and this would be for the 15, 16 school year. I wanted to provide you a short overview of what is migrant education, but we currently serve 256 students in our district with these grant funds. Currently, we have nine tutors who travel to 26 locations, working directly under the direction of a classroom teacher. We have a recruiter and a slash translator and a records clerk slash recruiter. And then 12 students received full scholarships to Crowder College through the migrant program this last year. It also helps to fund our Springdale Summer Migrant Program, which occurs, which is began actually on Monday, June 8th, and will go through the 19th at Jones Elementary and serves around 65 students. The curriculum for that is also provided through the Arkansas Department of Education through the Arkansas migrant program. So the approval of this allows all of those things to continue for the upcoming school year.
And if I'm understanding correctly, if we look at page 50 of our agenda, the federal funding that we're requesting, I'm looking in box seven.
Correct.
$261,828,000, right?
Yes, sir.
So that's what, okay. All right. I know that this is something we've, I'm, I'm used to seeing anyway every year, so...
Yes, sir.
Other questions for Dr. Witanski? Okay, if not, we'll accept a motion to accept this budget.
So moved.
Motion from Ms. McFetrich. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Cook. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? There is none, so motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Worked hard tonight.
Mike, I put item G on the agenda. All of us deeply appreciate the service you've given to try to take a look at the new learning standards, the, the assessment that goes along with that. I know the, the governor's committee is kind of pulling its work to a close and to give you an opportunity to share your experience, and we would all welcome...
was some front-page news today regarding the recommendation of the Common Core Review Council that the Governor had appointed me to. So, the timeline ended up getting sped up a little bit, with the biggest challenge being Department of Ed needed to begin to look at testing for next year, getting those contracts in place. And, you know, after five days of hearings and 40 hours' worth of a great deal of information in terms of Common Core standards, the assessment pieces and different things like that, we were asked to go ahead and make a recommendation as far as the assessment side of what should be done going forward. There was a great deal of conversation, there was a great deal of debate, there was concern, and, you know, really, at the end of the day, the recommendation that the council has made to the Governor was to move away from the PARC exam and move towards the ACT and the ACT Aspire. I'm certainly not going to sit here and act like I'm a testing expert today, but the reasons that were really given in the press release that was released by the Governor is that because of the national recognition of the ACT, the comparability between states, the minimal time spent testing relative to PARC, and it's assumed that it will be about half the time of the PARC testing, and the ACT's relevance to students. So, you know, as we made this recommendation to the Governor, he's since accepted that and has made that his recommendation to the Department of Education, has moved to the ACT and ACT Aspire. You know, it's tough, because I know in Springdale, we've got many teachers and really around the state that have worked really hard, and testing coordinators that have worked hard with PARC to try to put this together. The recommendation for ACT really was because of those reasons, there wasn't a unanimous decision, but the council did, there was a strong enough consensus that this was the recommendation that should be made to the Governor, and he is taking that moving forward now. The part that has not been done yet is addressing the Common Core state standards and what the council will recommend. There are still three listening tours that are ongoing. There's one that's tonight, actually, in Batesville. There'll be two more next week that I believe are in Pine Bluffing and Fort Smith. Upon conclusion of that, the council will be making a recommendation to the Governor of the Common Core state standards. You know, the thing, I remember years ago, Dr. Rollins, one of my first national school board meetings was when Jim Collins, that wrote "Good to Great," came and spoke to us. One of the things he talked about in education was, there always seemed to be a great deal of change. And if I was, if there's a room full of teachers, and I know there's a few of them out there, that, you know, that is certainly one of the things that with education, it seems like there is great change, and teachers are constantly having to deal with that. This is another one, and it will certainly come with some challenges too, but it did appear to be a comfortable spot to be in terms of ACT's credibility. And maybe not knowing as much about the ACT Aspire, there's still much to be learned about that. But, at this point anyway, the recommendation has gone forward with the ACT to be the assessment going forward. Now, I guess as I understand it, I do believe that's got to go before the Department of Ed and their board to approve that. So, that will be the next step prior to the end of the month. So, I tried to talk as well as I could. It was a great group of folks that I've had the opportunity to agree with, not agree, that I had an opportunity to meet with. I didn't agree with all of them, and they didn't agree with me all the time. But, it was a good group of folks that I think were thoughtful and really went through the process, so, you know, I'd go back to, really, the one thing I definitely have learned through this process is, you know, I know we hear teachers and administrators come to us and say that Springdale's a good place. Well, when you look at the way Common Core and PARC has been done around the state, our teachers and our administrators did a great job, because that's not what I've heard everywhere else. And it's important that you know that your team does a great job. That doesn't mean that every now and then we don't hear people that are frustrated with PARC testing or with Common Core. That's not what I'm saying. But what I'm saying is, we've done it well here, and better than many other places in the state. Anyway, I'll try to answer any questions that you guys may have.
That's always good to hear, that the district and Dr. Rollins and his team are doing a great job, because I know they've worked really hard to make it all happen.
Did you guys look at several different testing type options and settled on this as the best?
There were. We did spend one full day just on testing. So, for instance, we had folks from SAT there, ACT there, PARC that were there. I'm not going to recall the name of the Iowa test. Do you recall who does the Iowa test?
Riverside Publishing.
Riverside Publishing. They were there. I think there were another couple that I can't recall for sure, but it was a various group that day that kind of presented, here's kind of what we do, here's how we do it, here's some other states that have done it, so we heard a great deal of that too.
Sometimes I stand in front of the board and I think, you think I'm with my comments just to use a farmer's term, kind of polishing apples sometimes. That's seldom the truth. But, Mike, in terms of your work, I have heard from virtually every meeting, your willingness to listen and to be attentive and to try to sort through the issues. I don't think you could have represented our district any better than you did, and I'm saying that from the heart, because that's the way it's been conveyed to me from people from all over the state. So, we thank you. I really appreciate the comments about the work of our teachers. There's enormous change all around us, but Springdale teachers prioritize our kids and what's best for them. And they give heart and soul to try to bring forward new initiatives every day, and you see evidence of that in our school board meetings. The conversations about the new learning standards are really important. And again, the investment that our teachers have made in that, I think, is part of the progress that we're making. We're three-plus years into this experience, and you're seeing evidence of what their work is at every meeting. And I know you appreciate that. And I hope all of us will find a way to say thank you to the teachers of this district for the work that they've done. Whatever evaluation is eventually linked to those standards, I think we can work through and hopefully get comfortable with over time. But again, the things that stand out about the new standards is the opportunity to understand that these standards have been not just nationally benchmarked, but internationally benchmarked. That's one of the reasons we really plugged into this early on. And the opportunity for application of learning is so evident in the standards. And keep in mind, our teachers kind of took a template and wrote the curriculum and are developing, again, that implementation virtually every day. So, I think we're developing a really nice track record in Springdale about the power of the standards. And I know that the committee will continue to learn about those things, and you heard reference the "Out of the Future" meeting in Rogers today. The Commissioner of Education was there. He talked about the change initiatives that are out there, a new way, a new wave of delivering instruction. You just saw your team demonstrate to you what some of that might look like. So, I think Springdale is really trying to play a leadership role. I've said repeatedly, our school district's growing in prominence at the state and national level, and our kids, certainly our teachers, are leading the way. So, your support, your encouragement, your representation of that work, board, and certainly, Mike, in this role, we thank you for it. I want us to understand what's going on in our schools this summer. All of us are in, we hear conversations about year-round schools, and I think that is another initiative. We've looked at that, we've tried it, we've developed models in the past, we weren't quite ready then. I think perhaps we need to look at that again. But even in the absence, quote, of a year-round program, our schools are seemingly at full blast throughout the summer. I want Dr. Morely to share some of that with you.
Kathy? The happiest day in the lives of most of our Springdale kids is the first day of school. And one of the saddest days in their lives is the last day of school. And we've been talking a lot about giving kids things that they can say yes to, and that's what our schools, we challenge our schools to do that. And in your board agenda there, that first page, I kind of summarized just some of the things. We're talking about STEM and reading and writing and mathematics and drama and fitness and art and crafts and on and on and on and on. Kids can learn how to play the ukulele, they can learn how to play the guitar in the summer, they can work in a butterfly garden, or they could just garden. They can do all kinds of things across our district. Many of these things are funded by grants. Some of them are funded with federal funds. Some of them are just flat-out donations. We have teachers who come up and volunteer their time. We have principals who just drive, we have principals who will load up library books in their own vehicles and go out into the neighborhoods that their school serves. Hand out, I mean, they check out the books, they collect the ones that were taken out the week before, and that's how, all that goes in the summer. We have so many things going on for our kids. It is a great opportunity for them, and the whole focus, the primary focus, especially in our elementary schools, is literacy. We've got to keep the kids reading. We want them to read all throughout the summer. We want them to just have those fun opportunities to continue learning throughout the summer. That learning really is fun. It's really something that is, not only is it fun, it's good for you, and we want to keep that going.
Looks like quite a list.
It is. It is, and I, the secondary schools, there are things going on, our secondary schools. Dr. Brown and I were talking about that. We've got some traditional summer schools going on, but we've also got kids going off. I know, I saw a friend of mine was sending her child off to cheerleader camp, so we've got cheerleading camp going on, choir, band, sports going on. We've also got kids who are working on robotics, on all kinds of things throughout the summer. So, for our Springdale kids, we want it to be a full summer, whether or not you are going off to a camp somewhere, or if you're just going to play some sandlot sports with some of the police officers in our own schools. We want to make sure that our kids are all being served all throughout the summer.
I know you mentioned the delivery, you talked about it earlier, but this online option for a more formal summer school program has all kinds of possibilities without a lot of additional cost. And, you know, our English language learners and our poverty kids, they just need extra time. Something online during the summer, in a more formalized manner, might not have a big cost attached to it. Certainly keep those kids engaged and progressing during those tough three months when they're not in our buildings.
Absolutely. And that's what, even before we have access online for all of our kids all the time, that's what a whole lot of these programs are targeting right now, is they'll bring those kids in, particularly in the month of July, and continue to work with them and build that. And I know when we were at Shaw recently, remember at their school board luncheon, that was part of what the card that they gave us, they gave a similar card to the kids for the summer. They can scan the QR code, and it sets up reading and some reading games and challenges and things for the kids, just to keep them interested, keep them going throughout the summer. So, I think you're exactly right, Mr. Williams. In the future, I see us having lots of opportunities. I love the idea that Mr. Rollins talked about. He'll have kids who enter SOI in August who have already begun to work on their work. What a great opportunity. Thank you.
Great, thanks for sharing.
They're absolutely unlimited. Okay. It's an interesting time to be a part of the Springdale school system, Mr. Luttrell. We've been working for the last year or more on program development, facility design, getting the marketplace involved in plan, planning for the new construction. As you know, is Dr. Compton in the room? I've looked around. He's off doing something. Somebody send out an al call for Dr. Compton. He's fine tuning. Let's talk about our school of innovation. You know, right now, we're in a facility at the Jones Center. It's worked pretty well for us. You heard the numbers suggested tonight, we started 200. We're going to add another 200-plus in the year ahead. We think we're in good shape in terms of that space for next year. So, our plan all along has been to bring a new facility onboard in the 2000, so there he is! Al call! A new facility onboard. Gary, you want to come stand with?
Yes, sir.
Onboard for the 2016 school year. Our work in terms of the school of innovation has been with our architect, obviously, WDND, but we've worked with the Baldwin and Shell Corporation. We believe that the program designed for the kids for 2016 will require a space, as we go forward, between now and perhaps 2000 and maybe, what, four or five years down the road, we think that that space is going to need to serve about 1,000 kids. So, by 2020, we think we're going to need about 145,000 square foot facility, and that's what we've been working on. We've been doing that with a prescribed budget. I'm going to give you a letter from the Baldwin and Shell Corporation that talks about the construction of the new space, to be open in 2016, to serve up to 1,000 kids, the cost of that project not to exceed $24 million. I think you understand full well that the long-term look at that facility would be, again, by now in 2020, serve up to 1,000 kids, and then the second phase of that building could serve another 1,000 kids. If that takes place, clearly, that will be our third high school. We have Harbor on the west, Springdale centrally located, and New School of Innovation, very appropriately located on the east. So, a long-term look at secondary service for Springdale kids. The $24 million conversation represents significantly less than what the state had projected. The state had talked about $172-plus dollars per square foot. I think you'll find that this is going to come in at about $161 a square foot. I don't think, in my memory, there's been a greater concerted effort than what I'm going to talk with you about tonight in terms of these two schools that will open in '16. School of Innovation to open in '16, and then later I'll talk with you about the new elementary school that's to open in 2016. This is a budget we planned for. It's a budget that would be supported with partnership funds from the state, money is from second lien bonds, and taking some money out of our building fund to keep our annual pay at a level that we can comfortably handle. So, I'm going to give you this letter from Baldwin and Shell summarizing what I just told you. You have seen some schematics, some sketches of the building. Certainly, Mr. Sees here, he could talk with you if you wanted to get into that, but I would tell you, this, in my opinion, may be some of the best work that we've ever done. And I would tell you that because the marketplace is so different than what we've experienced in the past. Mike, I don't know how much more information you need. I know we've tried to bring the board forward. I strongly recommend that we approve this process, that we go forward with this not-to-exceed budget, and give our construction manager, in this case, Baldwin and Shell, the green light to begin dirt work now. light to begin dirt work now. And I think that's going to be essential for us to open the school in '16, as we have all anticipated.
So what are we approving different tonight than we did last month?
Well, the part that we have not done yet is actually approve the contract to be executed on this project.
That's right. We've been given-
That man is consistent with what you have shared with us the best. I think this is just the very formal portion of execute the contract, and here's, here's the number that it's not going to exceed, so.
We, we have been able, with the help of our architect and Baldwin and Shell, and certainly the work of our team, to, to bring forward the plan that we've been talking about, Kevin, for, for months, really. You're exactly right about that.
Questions for Dr. Rollins? If not, then I'll accept a motion to proceed with executing a contract with Baldwin and Shell for a not-to-exceed budget of $24 million for the school of innovation.
So moved.
You have a motion, Mr. Owenby?
Second.
Second from Mr. Hutchinson. Other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There is none, okay.
Board, thank you for that. I, I think this is a wonderful step forward for our school district, and I think, as you've heard tonight, all of these things fit together beautifully. The conversion charter school, it's been, that was discussed here this evening, will be an integral part of the new school of innovation. It could serve hundreds of additional kids, or frankly, thousands of additional kids. And it can all, it can all work, and these, these people are bringing it forward in a pretty special way. The next project I want to talk with you about is the elementary school that we have planned to open in 2016 as well. And if you will go, in your, in your mind, if you'll take that visual walk to the, to the site behind J.O. Kelly Middle School, that's where we plan to locate this new school. And we're looking at a facility here of about 95,000 square feet. A school much like Turnbow, Gary, elementary, it's the same size of Turnbow, and I'm going to talk about an exception to that in just a moment, but it's that type of school. So it's a large elementary school for us. Turnbow is currently serving well over 100 kids, aren't they? So it, it really does put us in a position to accommodate our continuing elementary school growth. Again, the state's been a phenomenal partner with us in this process, as we have projected all along, and I don't think I could say enough good things about Flintco. They have, they have truly been partners with us, and I know we have representatives here with us from Flintco this evening, and I thank them. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your partnership. We, we so appreciate it. Brent and Hugh, and members of the Flintco team have met with us numerous times, and there've been, there's been a lot of give and take, but you guys have been there through the entire process, and we thank you for that. They're doing really excellent work for us now, out at TG Smith, with a new media center out there, and now they're, they're moving over and getting ready for this new elementary. So Mike, what I want you to understand is there's another element of this proposal that we need to be familiar with, and I know you are. Pre-K, our pre-K program is growing by leaps and bounds. At the appropriate time, we're going to talk with you about another, another major grant that the district has received, exceeding $10 million, really, to help us grow services to our pre-K children. It's, it's just absolutely phenomenal, and, and Ms. Fleeman and our instructional team have worked so hard on that. Dr. Morley's has been a key player as well. But these, these new grant monies will allow us to grow our service to pre-K kids to over 1,200. That's pretty special. So the major challenge is where you can serve them, and I wonder how they are with their technology. So a part, a part of this proposal tonight is, is to bring the new pre-K center forward. And we've talked about a lot of different options. We've talked about four classrooms, we've talked about eight, 12, 16. We believe that we can bring a package to you this evening that will allow us to build 16 new pre-K classrooms to locate this facility onsite with this new elementary school. We've designed it in a very efficient way, and I, that's with a capital E. We're talking about 16 classrooms to, to provide direct service to the children. But again, with the help of our construction managers and our architects, we've been able to bring a facility forward that looks like a design facility. I drive home every day, I drive through Sonora, and I see the elementary school sitting there, I see the middle school sitting there, it looks like a wonderful complex. I visualize, Gary, the same sort of appearance on the J.O. Kelly site. It, it's going to be a beautiful thing. So my summary point, in terms of the cost of the pre-K facility, we think we can do that for just over $2 million. $2,500,000. And we've been working diligently, Dr. Jones has been a key player in the process, we meet on a monthly basis with the U.S. Department of Education. I really believe that we will get federal support for well over half that, and it may be a significantly larger percentage than that. So partnership, U.S. Department of Education, local dollars, a little over $2 million construction project that would be a part of the new elementary. And I'll need to do it separately, however, for accounting purposes. So again, the numbers that we're talking about for the new elementary school, Flintco has told us that they can build that project with a not-to-exceed of $14,877, $877,854. And again, the new pre-K component would be just over $2 million.
On top of the 14?
On top of the 14. The 14 will be for the traditional elementary, and then the pre-K, which will be connected by a quarter, would be a separate $2 million for that.
If that, if that pre-K facility was built today, that was already in existence today, how many classrooms would you free up then, out of your elementary schools?
About 16.
So you're almost one-to-one replacement with that, with that plan?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll gather some-
Traditional-
There you go.
Matched up in the end, right? Right.
But we're learning as we go. We're figuring out how to build, how to build a partner. It could, but more than likely what it'll do is free up classrooms that are out in the traditional elementary schools to provide growth there. It really is, it's got win-win written all over this proposal.
So one building, but separate?
There will, there'll be a, a traditional elementary school, looks a lot like Turnbow. There'll be a wing coming off the building, and there'll be a separate 16-classroom building sitting there, side by side with the new school. We kind of need to improve, approve, if you're comfortable with it, two contracts, if you will, just for accounting purposes, with the U.S. Department of Education on the pre-K.
The same lunchroom, the same staging, all that stuff?
This, this pre-K facility is classrooms-only.
Okay.
It sure is. But the new, the new school's designed in such a way, I think we can clearly do that. We've taken all that into account as we brought that facility forward.
And that gives us capacity for 1,200 pre-K?
I think, across the district, we will have capacity for that, yes.
The total number of kids, of students in this school? The total number of students that we can-
Twenty kids per classroom in the pre-K facility, so about 320 kids there. And the new school, again, like Turnbow, we can readily serve 700-plus, even 800-plus people. So it'll be a large, a large school that is designed, I think, in such a way that we've figured out how to make it work real well.
Plus you'll free up 16 traditional classrooms throughout the district, so that we might not have to build another school quite as quickly.
I think it would certainly give us an opportunity to delay that, but we'll study that real close. I don't want, I don't want to speak too quickly, but we don't know what growth it's going to look like in the next year or so.
But you're crowded now, you're crowded now in several schools, so it's, it's a win.
I don't, I don't think there's any question.
Yeah.
Dr. Compton, I thank you for all your help. Any comments you want to make, I would love-
I've said to you before, the opening of the new school will allow us to take some of that burden off, a few of the very crowded elementary schools, in particular, monitor Turnbow and Sonora Elementary, which are all going to be quite big. The opening of the new school will really help us with those three, and also the 16 traditional pre-Ks really will relieve us from many different elementary schools. So it gives us some breathing room for some amount of time.
So Mike, if you, if you're comfortable, or when you're comfortable, if you would just take action on the new elementary, and then we'll come over to the pre-K.
Just curious, did the rock issues with the foundation, did that end up working itself out okay?
It is, it is. Mr. Farmer was here tonight, knows it real well, and they've worked with their geotech staff, and it's an issue, Jeff, to be sure, but it's not one that we can't overcome.
But it, it is a part of the cost projection of the school, without question.
Write in the cost of that project. Do you, I think you and I have talked about this, in terms of your spaces for library, for cafeteria, since you're adding these 16 extra classrooms that will share that space, are you able to go with your same size of cafeteria and libraries, or do you have to grow those a little bit in your elementary schools?
Well, we're going to have to schedule, without question, appropriately, but again, those, those schools serve, they're 800-plus pretty well, and the pre-K work is going to be, to a great degree, confined to the classrooms, et cetera. I think we can manage that okay. With the dollars that we have available, I think, and this really, it does give us quality space, and as I say all the time, if we do our work well, I think we, we can deal with those issues.
You're pretty efficient, this building over here.
I hope we sure are, yeah.
For footage-wise?
Yes, sir. Okay, other questions? Okay, if not, let's address the elementary school first. You do see the letter from Flintco dated June the 8th, that reflects the proposed guaranteed maximum cost is $14,877,854 for the new elementary school. So let's address that one first.
I'll make a motion that we move forward on the elementary school not to exceed the $14,877,854.
You have a motion?
Second.
A motion from Mr. Hutchinson, a second from Ms. Cook. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There is none. Okay, let's move on to the second part of it now, for the new pre-K facility with a proposed guaranteed maximum cost of $2,5,944 on that project.
I'll move to, I'll second that.
Does that first? Doesn't matter.
Okay, Mr. Hutchinson made the motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second from Ms. McFetridge. Any other questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There is none. Okay. Brent will have that equipment out there tomorrow, I bet, so.
Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
I don't think he's exaggerating, is it? On order? Let me, let me just summarize real quickly. You know that we've had so many projects on the table. We, we have looked at the Harbor Stadium, the Springdale Stadium, now these two major projects, and they have been phenomenal projects, exciting projects to work on. I want you to know, and some of you probably driven by, Westwood Elementary School, we, as you know, we've added a new media center there a couple of years ago, but we, all of the old inefficient windows on the front of that building are being changed out, a new facade's being brought onboard, the milestone construction management company's working with us there, and that project's just over a million dollars, I believe, isn't it, Dr. Compton? The remaining project is the facade at Amdele. Obviously, the new media center's coming forward at Amdele, and that's going to be a beautiful facility. We're working on finalizing design and bid, and perhaps even this week, we'll get a better handle, Gary, on, on that projected cost Thursday.
We need Thursday morning.
So this, really, I think, a very ambitious program that we've been addressing, that, from the standpoint of getting the work underway, we're getting pretty close.
You notice, Westwood, any of you that have been by, the whole front of the school has all been torn off, and they've really started their work. They were ready the day the kids got out of school. It's an exciting project.
We've talked about this before, but not only do you get some efficiencies from the windows getting replaced, but what you do for those neighborhoods is just tremendous.
Exactly.
The ride, and the facelift from the entire little areas around those schools is, can't be overstated.
Well, we thank you for your vision, and support, and patience, in terms of bringing all this forward, but Mike, I think it's coming together nicely, so, good. Thank y'all. Gary, thank, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins.
Good, good job. All right. Item K in this first part of the agenda, I just concluded some summary documentation of the, of the special session that's been concluded. I, I think, Mike, I won't try to go through those pieces of legislation, the schools are not directly affected by that, but it's good information that you'll want to, to follow, et cetera. So again, I think that's coming forward. I'm sitting on the stage along with each of you, when the governor addresses our Springdale High School graduates, and I kind of shared the story, and I'm really encouraged by it, so I'll, I'll repeat it. The idea of the governor, the first day on the job, spending his time calling national corporations, inviting them to take a look at Arkansas, is real special, and you bring that home to all of our concerns about our children. You know, we're, we're sitting there talking on that particular day to 500-plus graduates, and my goodness, how important is it to all of us that those kids have the opportunity to stay home? Jeff, it's kind of nice when, when they come, come back, isn't it? But for those kids to perhaps have an opportunity to stay home and be employed in a meaningful way in the state, that's powerful. And so the idea of education going forward, businesses going forward together, is something we've been committed to throughout our, our work together, and I, I know that continues, and it's good to see these things coming forward together. I appreciate the work of our legislators. In the morning, one of our legislators will be here to deliver checks for our kids for academic performance, high academic performance. So that's, that too is really a great reflection of the work going on in our legislature, where they acknowledge that. Anything, Mike, that I've missed, or you'd like for us to talk about?
I don't think anything.
Okay. If, do you want to stretch a little, or take a break for a minute?
Take a minute break, if you don't mind.
Gary, are you ready?
I am, Dr. Rollins. Mr. Luttrell, members of the board, and Dr. Rollins, I think if you'll come to my report.
Yes.
Dr. Rollins indicated at the beginning of the meeting that it's a really good time to reflect on the past year but also get ready for the next year. And in my report, I kind of do a little of that for you. I'm really honored to get a chance to work in coordinated school health and nursing services and food and nutrition and transportation and maintenance and new construction. And I think you know the names of the people that I work with. I think many of you know them personally, and you certainly know them professionally. People like Mary Miller and Kathy Londer, Carol Godfrey, Dana Samples, Jeremy White, Dave Mountain. I just, I couldn't be surrounded by a better team. So just to say thank you to all of them. I also mentioned Dr. Rollins. He supports every single thing that we do with consultation, the ability to finance the project, and just his experience on how to get it done the right way. So all those people help to contribute to all the things that we do. So I just wanted to say thank you to every, all those people and everything that we have done. I'm really proud of that. I don't often ask you for a motion, but I do need one here tonight, Mr. Luttrell.
Yes.
There's a very complicated formula that the federal government uses related to lunch prices, and it basically works this way. The amount of money that they use to subsidize a free and reduced lunch child is the same amount of money that has to, that a paid child has to make. And every time they adjust their formula, it causes us to adjust what we charge for a paying lunch student. So you'll see the letter from Carol Godfrey that's in your packet. I would, they, their formula now would require us to raise lunch prices by 10 cents for all of the lunches that we serve, elementary, secondary, secondary premium lunch, adult lunch, and adult premium lunch. And so there are five lunches that are served. We would ask you to, for a motion, to raise those lunch prices, those five lunch prices by 10 cents. That's mandated, mandated to us by the USDA.
That's on page 101, if you're not looking at it already.
And I don't like that any more than you do. We hate to raise prices on anything, but it is part of their mandated formula.
Since it's USDA mandated, we pretty much got to do that.
We do.
So I'll make a motion to approve the 10 cent increase for school lunch.
Motion for Mr. Owenby?
Second.
Second for Mr. McFetrich. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's none.
Regrettably, thank you for all of that. I wanted to also say that we continue with Mary's help and Kathy's help, just trying to continue healthy programming in the district. We've got, we've got our work cut out for us in the state of Arkansas. Not so much in the northwest, but there's a lot of data about our state that really causes us to be concerned. We've done a lot of work with school gardens and farm-to-school projects, bicycling, which is going to hit our, our schools big time starting next fall. All of our bicycles have arrived. We're working hard to combat obesity. In our state, we rank number two in the country. We need to get more facts and data out there about cigarettes and despite all the data that you know and the circles that you fly in, where I'm sure you do not see a lot of people with cigarettes or e-cigarettes in your life, I'll bet you don't. The data on that in the state of Arkansas is every bit what it looked like a decade ago or 10, 20 years ago or 30 years ago. We still have about one out of every five teenagers aged 18 through 20 smoking cigarettes or e-cigarettes. And we need to remember that the tobacco industry is a sinister industry. They know how to go after people, they know how to go after kids. We continue to fight that through education, and people like Kathy and Mary lead that fight, all of our teachers do through their health curriculum. So we're continuing to be as healthy as we can be. I wanted to let you know that. I ran through some data at the end of the year, I thought you'd be curious about that. Item three in my report, the nurses, we screened in terms of vision, about 12,500 kids this year. We hearing screened 13,000 kids. We did BMI testing in grades two, four, eight, and 10. That's mandated by the state of Arkansas. We did flu vaccines, you can see about half of our kids, a little over 9,000. We ran the McDonald's dental van, we do sealant coating for our kids all over the community. Thank God for Beverly Charlton, those of you who know her, she's kind of a Miss Springdale person, she's as good as they get. You can see the work she does with school supplies and clothing. With her and Kathy and Mary, they brought in $560,000 in Medicaid reimbursement. We take in that money and then we spend it on those that need our help the most. And we partnered with tons and tons of really good people in our community, from Arvest Bank to, to Harps and all of them, Tyson and Hunt and so on, to help us provide services. And Beverly is really a key to that. And those of you that don't know her, she's over at the Washington Building, and she's the world's most charming person, you should get to see her. Kudos to Carol and her staff. When you're serving 3 million meals a year, it's, it's hard work in a highly regulated environment, and that's, that's really wonderful work that they do. We've had some conversations, taking a look at what's being done over in Tulsa, where they are using their food service money to bring in professional chefs in the daytime. It's, it's very interesting work, and I know you may have seen that at a school board meeting. We've visited the, the schools and done a little work. It's very interesting how they can take all of the government regulations and yet with the help of a professional shell, chef, turn that around during the daytime and create different food stations that are very intriguing for the kids. We are taking a look at that right now. We believe that it may be a project that might pay for itself. That's still under study, and I wanted to let you know that. Dana in his department, I think it's just staggering data that we run thousands of routes every week. We do 2,000 field trips and numerous athletic trips and art trips, and you all know all of that. We go everywhere. This year, now that the school year is over, we will have run almost 2.5 million miles in our buses. We've had a few fender benders and a few accidents, but we haven't had any on that really serious side, and that's really good news as well. He and his staff do great work. Tim and Tracy Day, Robert Guadini, they're just awesome people to work with as well. Our new guys on, on the ship down in maintenance and construction, and Dr. Rollins referenced these projects, there's nobody that knows more than Dave Mountain. He's just a bulldog in getting it done right for us. He's, he's just adamant that everything we do will be done right. And Jeremy's just done great work, as well as our new guy replacing Junior Copeland. Jeremy's an awesome employee, so we got a lot of work to do. If you saw Westwood, that's just an example of really good work by Flintco and Jack C. and the guys, and being ready, the day the kids get out of school, they were tearing that place apart, getting ready for, being ready for the fall, so that's really good. I did want to tell you that if, if you have noticed that our school grounds haven't looked too great during the month of May, I hope it's similar to your front yards as well. We have really struggled with mowing. We cannot take the tractors out because when we do, we create huge ruts. One of our wonderful elementary principals sent me a picture of a kindergartner this tall, and the grass was up to their knees, so I think it was a message for me to get out there and cut the grass. So I did take it in good humor anyway. So, and Dr. Rollins mentioned our other construction projects. The other thing, now that everybody's gone with no bus drivers there and food services shut down a little bit, although we do have summer feeding, this is really our time. We're, our guys are out there, we've, we've got a lot of work going on. We've got painting and office renovations, we're partitioning up old libraries, creating new classrooms, we're working on intercoms and better lighting outside, fencing, old flooring, you name it, we're doing it. We've got probably about 60 major projects going on in the district. 10 of them are truly big, big projects. So we're about our business. So, Mike, that's, that's all I've got for you.
Anything else for Dr. Compton?
Thank you, Mike, thank you, board. And Dr. Rollins?
Great job, thank you.
Mr. Luttrell, Dr. Rollins, members of the board, as you can see, I've been saving up my items, so I have nine tonight. I think we'll be out by 10 or so, so.
What's the grade? You've already been assigned a grade, have you?
No, we're not doing grades tonight, so.
Oh, okay.
The first item that I have for you, board, is a recommendation from administration with regard to the certified salary schedule. This has been presented to the Personnel Policy Committee as well as the Salary Committee from the Springdale Education Association, and they have both endorsed these. You can see the adjustment is $316 proposed to the base. This would be, we would cut a separate check in June for this, for our certified staff. It is retroactive, back to the first of the year, and then the salary schedule would be changed going forward. If, if you're kind of curious as to what's up with $316, well, the, about 92 to 94% of our certified staff are not top out on their salary schedule, so they will move down a step on the salary schedule, and the steps are typically around 684. So 684 and 316 is $1,000. So their, their pay next year would be $1,000 over what it's been up to this point this year.
I know you've worked hard, you and Dr. Rollins both, with the, with the teachers on this, so I'm glad you were able to find a way to, to come up with something, Dr. Rollins. I mean, I know it's tight, but that was, that's helpful, so. Okay. Questions or a motion from board?
Are we approving both of these at the same time?
Let's just do them separate.
Certified.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion that we accept the certified employee salary adjustment as stated on page 105 on our agenda?
So, motion from Ms. McFetrich, a second from Mr. Owenby. Any other questions? Being now all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's none, okay.
Board, the second item that I have for you, it's been the practice, longstanding practice of our district that when an adjustment is made to the certified salary schedule, then the average percentage is then, the classified salary schedules are then adjusted by the average percentage. In this case, that average percentage is .55. So the proposal tonight for you, for classified employees, is to adjust the classified salary schedules by .55.
And that's a little different than what's in our agenda, and Kelly did email each of you, I believe, the revised one that showed the .55 percent, so the, what we have in there is an error, .55 percent is the correct number, so.
All right, I'll move that we accept the classified employee sal- salary schedules by increasing it by .55 percent.
Motion for Ms. McFetrich?
Second.
Second for Ms. Cook. Any questions on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's none, so motion carries, all right.
The next item that I have for your consideration are, there are three students that would like to attend Springdale Schools but live outside the district. Administration recommends that these transfer requests be granted.
Motion to accept transfers?
Motion, Mr. Hutchinson?
Second.
Second from Mr. Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's none, all right, next.
Board, the next item that I have for you is the 6B or Special Education budget for the 1516 school year. Typically, this has been presented to you later in the year with the rest of the, of the budget for the district. However, the State Department of Education has asked that we move this up in the line and do it earlier in the year so that it wouldn't impede any funds flowing to us after July 1. So Dr. Smith is here, she actually prepared this for us. It's, it's basically, it's our best guess at this point of where we're, where we're going to, where we're going to be. We prob, we intend to revise it a little later in the year as we know more, but it's a, it's our fir- first shot at, at this budget. Dr. Smith, did you want to say anything or anything to add?
I'll answer any questions that the board members might have.
That's on pages 109 through 121, and you can see the detail once you get to page 120 and 121 of the, of the specific dollar amount, so.
Is it enough money?
Never enough.
That amount will change if the amount is in the budget to the proposed substantial equivalent budget is based upon our offices beyond the schedule for this school year that was completed. And it's just a projection, and we will get our allocation, which will be somewhere in the vicinity of what we was in last year, and how to do the number of new start revenue we're adding here, and we have, this will be a distinction, and that will be the basis for the budget that will be submitted in the upcoming year.
And board, the special ed budget comes forward in a myriad of categories. This is just the federal dollars that's flowing to us, and that will be supplemented by state and local dollars in the future. Kristy, our children served is 2,035 or so now?
We are just under 2,100, Dr. Rollins.
Just so, okay. Now, that's projected for next year or that's current?
That's current.
That's current, okay. So we've grown, we've grown quite a bit in that number. The overall projected dollars to serve this number of kids, what's the old, generally what, now for the total special ed budget?
State and local is just over 12 million that we have used, and that number is on the M O E portion of the program, and then of course around 4 million in the 6B dollars.
So Kevin, does that kind of help?
Yes, sir.
Overall, 15 million or so we're using?
15, 16, word.
Does it seem you need a?
We need a, a motion to accept the, I guess, 6B budget, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So that's what we're seeking.
Motion to approve the 6B budget, Special Education.
Okay, motion for Mr. Owenby?
Second.
Second for Mr. Hutchinson. Any other questions? All right, all in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's none, okay, motion carries.
Board, then, the next item that I have for you concerns the school election. As you can see in your budget, or your packet information, the election will be held on September the 15th. There are two positions on the school board that are up for reelection. One is an at-large position, and one is a zoned position. There is no millage question on the ballot. The millage will remain, is, will remain the same as it is currently, 40.5 mils. In the event that there is no opposition, and since there is no millage question, then absentee and early voting could be held if there is no contested election. If there is a contested election, then the polling sites will be open, something, and the Election Commission determines the number of polling sites. Something that's different about this school year's election is that individuals will be able to vote on any Washington County School Board race at any site. So, for example, if someone works in Bentonville but they live in Springdale and they want to run on their lunch hour to vote in the Springdale election, they can do it at the Bentonville site rather than having to travel back to Springdale. They're calling that voting centers. They're going to have voting centers. Any questions on the school election?
We don't, we don't, do we need to take any formal action on that?
You don't.
This part of the, okay, all right.
That's just for your information.
If nobody runs against Mike or Danny, we're not going to be out any money then? Or, you know, we have to pay a certain?
Well, I, I'm sure it will be significantly less. I imagine we'll still have some nominal fees, but not like running the polling sites. Yes. Board, the next item that I have for you is the proposed budget of expenditures for the year 2016, 2017. Per state law, this is, as, from my mind, this is what starts the election process. We have to publish a proposed budget for the year, a year out, not the year that we're immediately facing, but the following year, 60 days prior to the board election. So what I do is I just look at past history and how much percentage did each fund go up and just, and just ballpark it there. So it's just a good, the best guess that I can tell you today.
So Kelly, I think that is on page 128 and 129 of our agenda, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And so you can see, board, a, a suggested motion that is on page 128, then on page 129, you can see the detail of the proposed budget of expenditures for July 1, 16, and including July 30 of 2017. So that's, you can use the sample on page 128 to make a motion. Who wants to be the one?
We'll never get home if we don't do this here. Okay, make a motion to accept the proposed budget of expenditures with tax levy for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, to and including June 30, 2017, and to approve, to approve all related election documents.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Hutchinson, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Cook. Any other questions on this for Kelly? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's none, okay, next item.
The next item that I have for you, board, as you know, is Dr. Rollins and Dr. Compton have already discussed the building projects that are in front of us, the elementary school and the school of innovation. The state, as you know, is partnering with us on both of those projects. The district seeks permission tonight from the board to apply to the State Board of Education to issue second lien bonds in the amount of 22,810,000 to support these two projects. And these bonds would be for a 26-year term, to mature in the year 2041. Any questions for me on that?
Do I need to read that, or can we just say?
I would, I would accept a motion if you wanted to, to, what's on page 13 of our agenda, if you'd like it that way.
I thought you were going to do it.
No, you go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we accept the application for a permit to issue bonds that's listed on page 130.
Okay, we have a motion for Ms. McFetrich, is there a second?
Second.
Who's that?
Me.
Sorry, Mr. Hutchinson, all right. Any other questions for Kelly? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, I think you've got, you've got a few more here.
I keep going. Board, the next item I have for you, because the timeline is such on these projects that they're to open in the fall of 16, we need to get started immediately on these projects. We will not have the bond proceeds for several months, and so I ask the board to consider passing a reimbursement resolution whereby if we pay out anything on these projects in the next few months, that we could then reimburse the district out of bond proceeds when we do receive those proceeds.
Why do we have to do, explain why it requires a motion to reimburse ourselves? Help me understand that.
Because we're going to be, we could potentially write the checks like in July and August, but we won't get the bond proceeds till October. And so in order for us to say that we use bond proceeds, we have to have a reimbursement resolution to pay ourselves back.
Okay, all right.
If we, if time was not, if time, if we had another year, then we could just delay work on it until we got the bond proceeds, but because we're into the time crunch, that's, that's why.
All right. I move that we adopt the reimbursement resolution as written on page 142 in our agenda.
Okay, have a motion from Ms. McFetrich, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Owenby. Questions on that one? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's none, so motion carries there.
Board, the next item is just for your review, it's the, an update on the building projects, as Dr. Rollins has already alluded to. This spreadsheet's going to get longer pretty quickly, so we're going to, yeah, yeah, we're going to have to turn it the other way or something, so we'll, we'll figure that out. So, if that's, any questions on that, I'll be happy to try to answer those for you.
When are they going to take the 25, 150 dollars?
You know, if, if it won't hurt.
It'll be 30 days, and then we're going to keep.
If it won't hurt your all's feelings, since we're going to add several more, I may just pull that one off and just tell you when it happens, and then, because I'm, yeah, we're going to run out of space. And board, then, if there are no questions on that, the final item that I have for you is the May financial statements for this month. As you can see, we're still looking very, very good. I've, I've been a little nervous about our local taxes, I've just kept that to myself and just worried on my own, but hadn't bothered y'all with it. But I think that we're going to come out right on the money, so I'm, I'm excited about it. So we're in good shape there, and on the expenditure side, doing very well, so all is, all is good. Be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I do hate to put you on the spot.
That's all right.
I'll do it anyway. And, all right, so we've got one, one month left in our, our fiscal year here, I guess, in June. And where would you anticipate a surplus might land, or is it just going to be real close to just even, or what do you think?
Well, well, as you recall, the, the challenge that the superintendent puts before me each and every year is to prepare a budget without calculating any student growth into it. And we were fortunate enough to be able to do that this year. Notice I said "this year." So we have grown students to the tune of around 550 or so, so I'm very, I'm optimistic and hopeful that those funds could be transferred to the building fund if we don't need them to complete the year, and I, I'm hopeful about that. So, that could be around 3 million, 3, 3 and 1/2 million.
What about on the expense side?
Well, on the expense side, I, I'm thinking that with the salary increase that was just approved, which is not, was not budgeted, I did not budget a salary increase this year, so I'm thinking that may take up any leftover funds that I might have as residual. So I'm thinking, I'm, I'm thinking my expenditures will be a wash, and my revenue hopefully will be up around 3 and 1/2 million.
Well, that's great. I appreciate you keeping your eye on it. It's a big job for, for you guys. It's a big job for, for you guys.
Motion to accept the financial report as presented.
Okay. A motion for Mr. Hutchinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Owenby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is none. So motion carries.
Mr. Beardsley could not be here this evening, but he did send pens for all of you.
All right.
I want to hold up my hand like I need to.
Great. Okay. Is there anything? I don't guess there's anything else. I appreciate those of you that did stay in the room. Thank you very much. We're glad you could make it, and have a good evening. Our meeting is adjourned.